Chuck Stodick, how are you, sir?
I'm great, thank you. Appreciate the invite.
Yes, of course. And thank you for making the schlep. It sounds like you had some bad traffic, so thanks for hanging in there.
Yeah, but backed up about two miles, two vehicles collided, I think it was east of Linder, and that's what backed it up, so.
Man, the traffic. Listen, you're running for a, is it a third or is it a fourth term?
This will be my third term in seat number two, city council for Caldwell, yeah.
You've been here. You were here pre-COVID, you're running all, you're running the whole gamut, you've seen a lot in this area. Talk to me about the state of Caldwell and why you want to run for city council again.
Well, I'm retired from the Simplot Company, been with them almost thirty years. I've been retired since about 2007, eight, somewhere in there. And the supervisor that I had was vice president of food group. Now it's called food division, I believe, but anyway, when he hired me, he said, Chuck, he said, I hire you to solve problems. I don't want you to come in here and complain about things. I want you to get them solved. If you need some revenue, that's another story. Come to me and tell me how much you need and I'll help you out with that. But he said, that's what I hired you for, so don't come in and complain. So when I saw taxes going up drastically, like they did in the city and, and the county and the state, and other things relative to growth, you know, I don't think there was any rhyme or reason to growth in the city. I thought to myself, you know, I need to do something about this. What are you gonna do? So some friends said, run for city council. So I said, okay, I don't know a damn thing about city council business. So I said, I went to some meetings and lo and behold, looked at it and I think I mentioned to you before that, to me, a city council or a city needs to be run like a business or a corporation. You have so much revenue coming in, you have so many expenses and you better balance the books or something's gonna happen, you know? You're gonna have to raise taxes, which nobody's interested in. And so I ran for city council, was elected the first time around, and got into it. It was an eye opener for me. And like I say, the, the distance between running for city council and a corporation is just, just between night and day. And a lot of times I don't like what I see. A lot of times people will call me or send me emails and why did you vote this way? All I can do is vote on the evidence that's presented to me. And if it's, if it's not right, I'll vote against it. If I think it's best for the city, I'll vote for it. So that's it.
Ah, you know what I think? I think I need a Chuck in my life. I need somebody to come in and just, don't talk to me, you just solve them problems. Here's a little money, get it done.
Yeah, well, he was very demanding, but I tell you what, I learned a lot from him. His name was Paul Hanson and I tell you, even Mr. Simplot went to him if there was a potato problem or if he wanted to buy potatoes or sell potatoes, whatever, he went to Paul Hanson. He was, he was the guy, the go-to guy for the Simplot family, because he started with them in the beginning and he did a great job for them, so anyway.
Well, it sounds like you know how to set expectations with new hires.
Yeah, right.
Could you tell me something? And I was not here, like I just got here in 2022. So I'm very new to this area. I do not know what Idaho was, and the Idaho, like property tax situation was pre House Bill 389. Now naturally, now we know House Bill 389 says, hey, look, the, the taxing districts can only increase budgets at a certain rate.
Right.
Okay. Now, that rate can go up a little bit if you have a large amount of growth in your area. But if you have like an explosion of growth, as a lot of the Treasure Valley has experienced, there is not a big, like, if you have, for instance, Star has grown, I think a hundred percent over the last five years. There's not a hundred percent growth mechanism for the budgets in the taxing districts. What was the taxing district pre-House Bill 389? Like what, how much could budgets go up? Because people talk about property taxes going up and people being not happy about this. By the way, I've never been happy when I saw my property tax go up. I'm never like, yes.
Are you in city limits out here or county?
This is unincorporated.
Unincorporated, okay. So you're roughly like county. Well, when I first moved here, I lived in the county first and my taxes are real cheap. They were about fifteen hundred dollars a year. When I moved into the city, they were still cheap prior to House Bill 389. They were about twenty-two hundred a year.
Okay.
And after that, and this was before, prior to House Bill 389, they kept going up every year. And about three years ago, they were up to forty-two hundred dollars. Didn't do anything to my home. It was a brand new home. Didn't add anything, no garden sheds.
No reassessment.
No, no, none of that. And House Bill 389 came along and it did reduce taxes somewhat. I'm back down to about twenty-five hundred, something like that. And, but it's just a temporary thing, you know, that's the problem with it. They all, people always think that this is long-term, but this is just a temporary thing.
How is that, if I may ask?
What they need to do is they change, they need to change the structure of this, because right now, property owners, the last figures I saw, they still, they still burden about seventy-two to seventy-five percent of the total tax burden. You know, as far as structure is concerned, infrastructure, all the other things that go along with around the city. Commercial, industrial, you know, roughly twenty percent, something like that, twenty-five percent, and then the rest is ag. In previous years, I've been here since nineteen seventy-seven, I'm a native of Minnesota, was born, raised there on a farm. And previous to that, the ratio of that was around sixty, thirty-five, and the rest was ag. You know, sixty property tax, thirty percent, thirty-five percent on commercial, industrial, and, and the rest was ag. Now, I'm an ag supporter, been in ag just about all my life, and I can understand some of the things that they need. And ag is a very important part of our whole tax structure, you know? Wasn't for ag business, you know, where would Idaho be? And so it's very important to us. They bring in a lot of revenue. And the problem we have right now is this differential between the homeowners and the commercial, industrial part of our tax structure. And that needs to be shored back up again where it's around that sixty percent and thirty, thirty-five percent, and the rest is ag, because there's a schnapps in their fair share and everything is burdened onto the homeowners right now, and that's the problem. And after 389 was brought forth, I think it was by Moyle, Mr. Moyle. And Harris was part of that too, and I think Lieutenant Governor Bethy was part of that too, but. And you look at, you know, there's always rhyme or reason to a lot of things. You look at Mr. Moyle's property, I think he's got mostly commercial and industrial. And I know Mr. Betke, you know, he's a rancher down in the Burley area and he's, he's mostly ag. I don't know what Harris is, but sometimes you wonder to yourself when I come up with these bills, do they, are they really fair to the majority of the people, you know, that live here? And I think 389, again, I think is gonna be a temporary thing and I don't think it's gonna last too long. You'll see property taxes going up. And a lot of the state legislatures, legislative legislatures, people think that they know how to run a city business better than the city council or the mayor does. And for the most part, that's not true. I mean, you know, for instance, House Bill 389, if you have new construction, for instance, you're only allowed to take about eighty-five percent of that. The rest of that goes to urban renewal or some other avenue and, you know, we have so much growth, we need that extra ten or fifteen percent just to survive with the infrastructure and all the other city entities that we need to supply our homeowners. So that's, that's where the problem lies. It's just not, it's just still not fair. It's better than it was, but it still isn't what it should be.
Gotcha. Yeah, and again, you're, as a city councilman, it's not like, it's not like you have some magic wand to fix it. I'm just curious, because people, as you articulated, this is kind of what I thought, that property taxes were going up, because people always say like, oh, property taxes are going up, all this growth. It's like, okay, but under 389, as growth happens, especially at the breakneck pace that it has, that should drop your property taxes. So you confirm like, no, 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 we've seen a decrease. But it's kind of like the specter of that raising property tax from the decades prior, where it's like, yeah, everybody felt it. Yeah, we've reversed course, but that, that still doesn't alleviate the anxiety or the memory of, no, 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 like my property tax doubled. Like, like it went from, you know, a hundred fifty bucks a month to three hundred or four hundred dollars a month, and that's a huge chunk of change.
Yeah, and another component to that too is, you know, the state legislature is supposed to be in charge of, of making sure that schools have enough revenue, okay? So when this 389 came along, that was good to start with, just a temporary thing. Now we have this overgrowth problem that we have where so much building is going on. It's, you know, I try and, and vote the best I can on the information I have relative to that growth, but what happens is that this growth comes on, then we have overcrowding the schools. Valley View is a typical example. I live in a Valley View school district. But city government and the mayor will tell you, well, your taxes are actually going down. Our, our city tax, and I think it was twenty, twenty twenty-one was around thirteen hundred dollars, twelve hundred dollars for a three hundred fifty thousand dollar home. And now it's down to eight hundred dollars. Sounds good on the surface, doesn't it? But because of overgrowth and the crowding, overcrowded schools and everything, we need a lot more elementary schools, a lot more high schools, you know, a lot more middle schools.
Bonds and levies.
So you pass bonds. I've got three bonds right now on my tax bill that makes up at least twenty-five percent of my tax bill, and that's what they don't tell you. They tell you, yeah, we reduce your taxes, but when you add those, those bonds on to your tax bill, it goes back up again. See, and they don't tell you that. That's the problem we have.
I had somebody in recently who's running for West Ada School Board and her, you know, we were talking about this exact issue, because West Ada has the same problems that, you know, the Valley View and Caldwell School does, all of them. And the problem that she articulated, which I thought was very well stated, was, look, if you put the burden of funding schools on that localized community in the way that we have now, right? And as you pointed out, it's the state's responsibility, but we've put it on to the actual areas. The problem is you will have enormous disparity in quality of education or accessibility to education throughout the state. And that would be fine if it weren't a requirement in our constitution that all Idahoans be, be provided a safe and valuable education, right? So you get that problem where it's like, okay, you have some areas like Valley View that have been able to pass levies or bonds, and that burden is put on those individuals, and you have other areas of the state where they can't do that. So just the nature of, of this funding equation essentially, which is, all right, man, like one, we're artificially decreasing your property tax, but we're not gonna fund the things that, you know, you're gonna get hit for anyway later on. It becomes a big problem.
Yeah, it does. It does. And when, and when you get up to twenty-five, thirty percent of your tax bill going towards bonds, it tells you the state legislature isn't doing something right, because they're responsible for that. They're responsible for, for giving the revenue to schools so they can operate, whether it's repair, maintenance, whatever it is, they're responsible for it, so anyway.
Well, listen, thank you for that. If you're just gonna, I haven't been able to talk to somebody who has a long history of property tax knowledge. So coming back to Caldwell, with the growth, right, and we do have a lot of growth, and you're saying, hey, look, you try to make the best votes with the best information. Talk to me about growth in the area.
Well, right now we're concentrating on infill. And what infill is, we have city limits that, that has a boundary with the county. And what we're trying to do is fill those areas that, that belong to the city right now. And there is some county property within the city limits too, and they usually annex that over. And what we're trying to do is, is, is put the infill in those areas now that border the city limits, instead of going outside the city limits, city limits into ag ground, which I'm totally against. But what happens is, we just had a situation come up this last Monday evening at our council meeting. There was a development group that wanted to put fourplexes and condos and all that on the corner of Montana Avenue and Homedale. And all the areas of development around that are single-family dwellings. So we, we have these fourplexes and condos wanting to go in this certain area that's gonna, you can look in people's backyard, those kind of things. Well, that just doesn't match up, and that's the problem we're having. It's good infill, we want to infill, but infill with the right development.
Like to like.
Like to like, exactly. And they had a commercial proposal at, at a gas station, you know, convenience store and all that kind of stuff too on that corner. And it just doesn't match, but some of the, some of the council members vote for it because they think that, well, we gotta do this infill first, gotta get it done as quick as possible. But they never think about what's gonna happen to the neighbors that have to live in, in that area. Do you want somebody looking down at your backyard, you know, in a three or four-story apartment complex? I wouldn't, you know? And those are the things I kind of look at when these developers come in and make a proposal and in my own subdivision, I live off of South Florida in Carter, we had the same thing happen. We took the word of this development guy and that was right next to our subdivision, and he did build single-story condos partially next to our subdivision. But then a couple of years went by and all of a sudden, now he built two or three fourplexes, which looked down in people's backyards, which he wasn't supposed to do. He promised that he wouldn't do it. And actually, these people that live in my subdivision are still, that actually sold their houses because of it. And it just shouldn't happen that way. You know, we gotta, we gotta have matching developments with what's there right now. You, you can't mix the two together. That just doesn't work very well, so.
So bottom line is, your, your ideas, look, we're gonna grow. That's, that's happening. But we have to grow in a way that, that aligns with the existing layout of the city. We have to grow within the bounds of the city and infill, so we stop taking ag land, which decreases the, the tax revenue and, you know, all the problems that come with taking ag land. But the emphasis is, look, we can just lay out a plan and let developers pick which piece of the pie they wanna grab. But what they can't do is reach into a different pie or engage in a plan that doesn't fit.
Exactly. And we don't, you know, the city doesn't solicit annexation.
Sure.
It's voluntary. And the other problem we've had is there's been too much ag ground that has actually been let loose by the county commissioners. And right away, of course, the folks went annex into the city for sewer, water and all the other good stuff. And, and again, we had a, a project. I think it was last year, it was called the Chickasaw Project. Farmway was kind of the borderline where it, it was a separation between city development and ag ground. There's a lot of seed areas west of Farmway and on the north and south, Carter's on the south and Simplot Highway going to Greenleaf is on the north side of it. And it was a mutual understanding with the ag group in the city that you don't wanna go west of Farmway, because if you start developing that stuff, it's gonna take up a lot of good seed area. Beets are growing out there, potatoes, a lot of grain and all that. Well, a year or so ago, this Chickasaw Project came out and guess what? It's west of Farmway. And a lot of nice homes, development was beautiful development. And three of us voted against it and three voted for it. Then, of course, the mayor, he broke the tie and voted for it. And again, the seed company had no idea up until about a week before the development was even going in, because it wasn't advertised properly. And that's partially the city's fault there. And, you know, if they didn't know about it, then that, that ground is lost to seed now. And what, what it does is when those ag ground developments come in, they actually restrict the other ag ground around it, because you can't spray the chemicals sometimes that you'd like to, certain hours when you have to apply fertilizer and chemicals. It just, there's a lot of restrictions on ag ground when it's, when there are developments around it, yeah. Yeah, and that's a problem.
So in effect, that it devalues it because you decrease the operation.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, and then, you know, ag ground qualifications, if, it's my understanding that if you have a couple of acres, say you grow, say you raise a couple of head of cattle on it.
Sure.
And you butcher one and sell it to the general public or to your neighbor or whatever, well, you get that ag exemption for that. That's nonsense. They, they should be taxed similar to what the city should be taxed there, city property.
Hang on a sec now. So if I got a cow, if I got two, and I eat one and I sell, sell to my neighbor, I get an ag ground exemption?
That's a simplification of it. It is exactly what happened.
You are speaking my language, Chuck. I'm gonna have to look. I was on the way to school today. So I, you know, obviously beef prices have gone through the roof recently. There, I was, I had this fantasy getting a, I know it's dumb, man, don't judge me. I had this fantasy getting a big, a big Highland cow named Bella. And I was gonna like.
Those are the long furry kinds, right?
Yeah, big furry hair. Oh, they're so cute. And doing her, doing her hair like a big eighties rock band, you know, teasing it out, right? I had this idea, and then it turns out that, that Highland cows right now, especially with the cost of beef, Highland cows are going for like twenty-five thousand each, or something absurd, right?
Doesn't surprise me, huh?
So I was telling my son on the way to school today, I was like, hey bud, this is what I think I'm gonna do. I'm like, I'm gonna buy two of them and then I'm gonna breed them. And then we're gonna sell Highland cow babies for twenty-five grand. I'm gonna make all kinds of money. And then we're gonna eat the other ones. And he was like.
And you would get the ag exemption too. You would.
Man, that's, all right, well, put a pin in that one, Matt. Anyway, so the bottom line is, stopping the, the increased footprint, it's bad for ag land, it's bad for a number of reasons, but allowing developers to develop, but only in a way that matches what, what's best for existing Caldwell citizens.
Yeah, exactly.
Talk to me about the burden on existing infrastructure in Caldwell with this increased growth, because this is a big concern that people have.
It is, and it should be, because when a new development comes in, you know, a lot of times they'll, they'll advertise as, we're gonna build an extra left or right-hand turn lane, we're gonna put in a stoplight for you. And say it's a, say it's a hundred homes, and usually I figure, I've never believed a traffic study, to tell you the truth. It's always more than what they say it is. That's my experience. But say that, say it's a hundred homes, you have two vehicles per home, you know?
Two hundred cars.
Two hundred cars. What they don't tell you is, what about the roads that already been built, say, a quarter mile down from that new subdivision? Who's gonna take, take care of those roads because of all the, all the increased traffic?
Right.
They never tell you that, see? Never consider that. They always say, well, the stoplights, great.
We're gonna have a protected left turn. It's gonna be great.
And it would be, but they never tell, tell you about the older roads that are down there that, that need repair too, and, and it just doesn't do it with the new development, period.
So what, what, if anything, can the city do as we're engaging, not we, because I don't do anything, but as you are engaging in development, what is a way that you could mitigate those, those additional layers of, of, again, just degradation to existing infrastructure?
General services to the taxpayer. Yeah, well, the one thing is impact fees. We've been so far behind on impact fees. We have increased it this last year, but we're still far behind. I'll tell you a little story about impact fees. When I first ran for council seat, I was invited over to the Ford Center, to the Treasure Valley, I think it was Builders and Developers Association or something. They had about five or six tables around, and they had about five or six people at each table, and then you were supposed to visit each table for ten minutes and tell them, you know, what your platform is and all the other kind of stuff. First question that was asked me on each one of those tables, Chuck, what do you think about impact fees? And I said, they're important for all the services that we need to supply, keeping up the roads, the sewer, the water and all that, and you guys don't pay enough of them. It's more of a burden on the homeowners again. First thing they said, well, we're not voting for you. Each one of those six or seven tables I was at, that was the first question they asked me, and that's the same answer, we're not gonna vote for you.
I was gonna say, you probably became the most popular person.
I wasn't that day.
Okay, so.
But it's only fair, you know, Doug on it, you know, again, the homeowners have been burdened with this, this high property taxes and, and the developers and the home builders, and they just haven't been paying enough and they need to pay more. And we were so far behind on that, it was just pathetic when I, on my first term. And then we had a situation where, again, I'm talking about, we talked a little bit about before we started here, about having a, a city manager to keep track of all these policies, make sure they're enacted and, and they're run properly. We had an impact fee program that they forgot to put in the computer, they, meaning somebody along the line, the head honcho should have been responsible for it. It wasn't put in. In one year, we lost one point eight million dollars in impact fees. I mean, that's just unacceptable. And I, you know, I, I told the folks that were in charge of that, if you were working for corporate, you would have been fired probably the next day. And that's why I say that cities should be run more like corporations. You got so much revenue coming in, here's what your expenses are, and you better make them meet and balance. Because that's, just hasn't been done. We have a balanced budget, but we always have to take some money from our, our rainy day funds to make up for some of the expenses that, you know, and our, some expenses do come along that you can't let, snowmageddon, for instance, I don't know if you were here for that, but.
That was in twenty-two, wasn't it?
Yeah, and we had a lot of snow and, you know.
That was literally like the first week I got here.
Our budget went out the window on that one. But, I mean, there's exceptions to the rule, but most of the time, you can stay within what you're supposed to, what you're supposed to spend, your means or your property tax revenue coming in. So, but when, when you don't have programs like that, that you develop that are supposed to help the taxpayer, and then they don't get enacted, I mean, that's, it's just nonsense. That's just unacceptable in my, in my opinion.
Listen, I, I stand by what I said when I invited you in here. I'm not looking for drama or inflammatory commentary. What you have articulated though, and the topic, the one point eight million dollars, is something that a lot of people brought up to me, and I don't know the background or really understand what happened. And, and again, I'm not looking for drama, but would it be possible for you to explain to me what transpired for Caldwell to lose the one point eight million?
Okay, we developed a program with impact fees. We have a committee, impact fee committee. They put together what the fees they think should be. They bring them to the council and then we approve them.
And may I ask, that the impact fees are determined by things that you can point to specifically and be like, this is the problem that we are having. Like you have to, you have to make a case for the impact that is being, that is being experienced by these things. So you bring a list forth along with a dollar item, saying like, okay, I think this road and this, this, and this sewer and this, and blah, blah, and you go down the whole thing.
Repair and maintenance, yeah, all that kind of stuff. Yeah, and then it brings to the council and, and then we vote on it. And what happened is that, again, as I mentioned before, we were so far behind on impact fees. We hadn't raised impact fees for a lot of years. And we weren't keeping up with the services to our, to our taxpayers. Streets were getting pretty bad. A lot of potholes and all the other stuff that goes on. Sewer needed to be maintained. Our treatment plant needed to be maintained better and so that's what happens when you don't have enough impact fees. So it comes to the council and we approve or disapprove. And when we found out that we were so far behind on impacts, and we compared ourselves with other cities too. I mean, this wasn't just, you know, throw a number up on a wall with a stick, let's do it, you know?
Because fixing a sewer line or maintaining a sewer system in Middleton versus Caldwell, like, you're not dealing with different systems or different contracts. It's like, hey, man, if they're taking, if they're putting a line item of a quarter million dollars for sewer maintenance annually, and ours is a hundred fifty thousand, what, what do they know or what do we know? Like, why the disparity? So of course, it's kind of like, hey, if everyone else is, is, is requiring these dollars that have been verified, why are we lower?
Right, exactly, yeah. And that happened with our golf course and the whole shot, anyway.
So they bring forth the, the impact fee and you guys approve them.
Yeah, we approve them. Then it gets put into our computer systems to make sure that developers that come in on that certain date, you know, there's always a cutoff date and a start date, that they are charged that particular fee for this development, for the sewer, whatever it is. Well, that system never was put into the computer system. So the developers came in after the date that we approved it, and they were never charged the proper amount to maintain or, or, or put revenue towards that, towards that project. And that went on for a year.
And once the contract has been signed or the permit issued, if it said a hundred bucks, you can't be like, hey, man, I actually meant two hundred. And they're like, no, 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 you said a hundred.
Exactly, yeah. And you can't go back and, and collect it. See, it's just the way it is. And, you know, there, there is a developer on the impact fee committee right now. And he told me during my first term that if we raise the impact fees too high, it's gonna slow our development down, that people won't be able to afford homes and all that. And I said, I have a hard time believing that, especially with the growth pattern that we have now. I said, you know, we need it for streets and services provided to the homeowners. I can't believe that another two or three thousand added, added on to a, a house wouldn't make a difference to hardly anybody. Might disqualify maybe a few on some loans, but overall, you know, I don't think it would happen.
Overall, that's like a one percent of like, what's the average cost of a home in Caldwell? It's over three hundred thousand.
But he said, no, it's gonna slow growth down and, and people won't be able to afford homes. Well, history tells you that never did happen, you know, it just, you know, just, just didn't happen, period.
Yeah, and as a side note, I was really blown away. Again, I got here in the beginning of twenty-two. And then, of course, interest rates started rising in March, April and May, and I was really blown away by the capacity for the market to just absorb those increased interest rates. It's like, wait, how is this possible? You, you went from a three percent to a seven percent. And the house, like, yeah, the market contracted a little bit, maybe, you know, five percent or ten percent. But you didn't have this Max Exodus. So like, oh, I guess there's just enough, you know, and again, it's, it's raw. I mean, interest rates are coming down, thank God.
Yeah, exactly. And they, they need to, you know, I, I was, you know, I'm not exactly young anymore. I'm eighty-two years old and, and I went through the Carter age where they had gas lines and, you know, high interest rates and all that, and then it, it became reasonable and, and now we're, we're back up to what, six, seven percent on a homeowner, I think it is, but it needs to come down. But that would help you, that would help the economy out drastically if those interest rates came down.
Oh, yeah. I have, I have a very good friend who, who just bought out in Middleton. He's a younger guy, young family in his late twenties, and it's his first home. And, you know, actually, I'm, I'm very happy that he was able to acquire the home, and he bought, purchased, I think, at like seven percent. Because, you know, hopefully, what I was telling him was like, look, man, hopefully, interest rates are only coming down. So your home is gonna become more affordable to you.
Right, and you can refinance it.
You can refinance like that. And, and again, it's, man, it's an interesting situation. Anyhow, so that's, that's the one point eight million that essentially was missed out because of, you know, essentially execution with the.
Exactly. And we're a city manager, we'd help that situation out. You get, you know, I, when, when I was with the Simplot Company, we were always looking for new areas to grow potatoes, to build plants, processing plants, and here in the United States and up in Canada, and I did some overseas travel too, but every city that we went to, if we had a, a good economic development person within the city or a city manager, we always had more accurate numbers. They got back to us a lot quicker than versus if the mayor ran it. If the mayor ran it, it was always, well, let me see what the numbers are and I'll get back to you. And, and most of the time was a timing issue. And we had to wait just too long in most cases before we got the right information. So city managers, when you get, my opinion, So city managers, when you get, my opinion, when you get 60, 70,000 folks in a city, that's when you need somebody to 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 manage what's going on within the city. And obviously, you know, we have three guys running right now for mayor. And if there's a city manager that goes in, obviously, the the salary of the of the mayor should go down because he's not doing all the work that a city manager would do. But a good city manager is a benefit to homeowners and everybody. Just the whole spectrum of how a city operates. And yes, you have to pay for a good city manager. But in my experience with Simplot, it's it's worth the worth the money, I'll tell you.
Gotcha.
Versus losing 1.8 million dollars.
Every time, every time it's like, that's so much money.
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money. It's 1.8 million dollars. That's a lot of money. Talking about streets and and improvements in city, talk to me about what your perspective was with the parking meters. Because this was another one thing, and again, I'm not looking for drama, but this was another big issue that a lot of people brought forward. And I've heard a lot of different, a lot of different sides of it. What what did you see is happening?
Initially, I was in favor of it because the information that was fed us by the mayor and and this committee that was set up. They told us that the all the business, most of the business downtown were in favor of it. They told us that the patrons, most of them were in favor of it. And those two things is what what told me that, yeah, this is probably a fairly good idea. Well, those two things were not the case. I don't know what happened between the communication of the business owners and the patrons versus our city. But it was not a majority by a long shot that they were in favor of the parking meters. When I found that out, I voted against it because I didn't want it. And that's what we're here for. We're here to represent the businesses and the people, property owners. And there were, we still haven't found out yet, but there were some, well, there's verbal agreements or signed agreements that were made by city officials that cost us quite a bit of money to get out of that too. I think it was around 140 or 50,000 dollars to get out of that contract. They should have never have signed or gave a verbal response or okay to that contract without city or city council approval.
Gotcha.
That in that shows what it was.
So it it sounds like that the bigger picture is just, look, man, information changed, right? Because if you do have the patrons saying, hey, yeah, this sounds great, and you do have the businesses saying, hey, yeah, this sounds great. Then you, the city council, this sounds great. Everybody's saying this sounds great.
Absolutely, yeah. And I keep telling people, you know, my constituents, my folks that are in my neighborhood, if you guys don't come to council meetings or send me emails or opinions, how do I know what the barometer is to approve something or not approve something? And, you know, we've got a little bit more participation, but we still need a lot more by everybody, you know, relative to making good decisions for them. So whether it's business or whether it's homeowners.
The hotel.
Yeah.
Same question.
I voted no against it because, number one, that piece of property, you know, charging $5,000 a year for lease, give me a break. I mean, that's worth 100 times more than that. In fact, there were some other businesses that offered more just to have it for parking for their businesses than the hotel did. And I just think it's in the wrong place. There were about three other locations nearby that they could have put that hotel that wouldn't have affected, you know, the staging area for the rodeo, the kids that bring the animals and all the other things that that's cooperated with the with the fairgrounds. So I just, I'm I'm just sorry it's going up, period. I'm totally against it. So I I talked to one of the officials at the fairground here the other day. And I said, how'd the fair go this year? And and that person said, oh, fairly well. And I said, were you down in anything? And he said, well, we had complaints about parking. And the biggest thing that she noticed was the reduction in the amount of animals that the the kiddos brought in because of the problem with not being able to stage it there in that particular area. And and it was down about, I think, 60 entries, something like that, which is, I think, usually there's around 360, 70 entries. So that's quite a bit.
There, there's a gentleman running for Nampa mayor, so not, obviously not Caldwell. But I had a conversation with him the other day, Eric Myrkes, great guy, great conversation. But what he brought up was a big, with regard to the Ford Idaho Center, his criticism was the process. He's like, look, man, process, like, you can't, you you can't go through this whole thing without process and then throw process, you know, into the end and blah, blah, blah. But that's that's something similar that I've heard about the hotel, which is like, listen, we need a better process. Like, the process was not was not something that people looked upon favorably for this particular situation. Is that is that kind of your feeling?
That's very accurate. You know, we weren't part of that process, we the council, as far as negotiating what was going to go in there and all that kind of stuff. But our relationship right now with the county is probably at an all time low, from what I remember all the years I've been in Idaho. We just don't communicate between each other. And I think had we communicated, perhaps that hotel would be someplace else. And I can understand why they have a negative view of the of the city of Caldwell right now, the the county does. Fully understand that. It takes two to tangle a little bit, you know, but it, we should have taken the initiative. We, meaning if we knew about what was going on, the the mayor should have taken initiative and sat down with those county officials and, you know, with the city council involved and tried to work something else out. So it's just unfortunate.
Indian Creek Plaza. Right, this is like a gem in the area. You know, everybody I talk to that's engaging in NAMP elections, they're always like, Indian Creek Plaza, everybody knows. How, that's obviously a success, but how do you keep building on that success in Caldwell to keep building up the economic base downtown?
Well, we've we've invited the same consultant that did the Indian Creek Plaza, Roger Brooks. We've invited him in and said, now, how can we continue to expand the success story that we've had? And right now, it's in negotiations with him as far as what his plan is. I haven't seen it yet. I don't think council has. I don't think the mayor has either, but we're waiting for his program to be presented to us, his ideas. And that'll happen, I think, this next month in October. And then we'll just sit down and say, okay, what's best for Caldwell? And I think most of the people don't know either, as far as history is concerned, and maybe I've been here too long. But in the beginning, the city actually didn't want that plaza being built. If it wasn't for three or four businessmen downtown, that would have never happened. And city government, for whatever reason, I don't know, I wasn't involved with at that time, but they just said that, no, this isn't a good thing. And, you know, at that time, we had businesses leaving like you wouldn't believe out of downtown Caldwell. And I I actually had my office, one of my offices was in downtown Caldwell, when I was Raw Procurement Director for Simplot Company. And at that time, it was a bustling downtown. I mean, people all over the place, parking was a little bit hard to find. And, you know, after the downturn, the economy came, then just about everybody left. And I think Cartier Mall had probably something to do with those in early days too. But but anyway, he's back in and a lot of us are looking forward to see what he's got planned. And another item that we have in Caldwell too is trying to develop the north side, north side of the freeway. Because it's been a kind of an eyesore for a lot of years. A lot of the administration folks that were in city council and the mayor in previous years, they gave it lip service, but nothing ever got done. And Roger's going to be a big part of that too, Mr. Brooks, as far as trying to get that developed too. So maybe lower income housing to help the folks that don't earn these big salaries. And and so we're looking forward to that too, because we need to develop that, because there's a lot of sidewalks that haven't been built in 50 years that should have been for the kiddos to walk in and streets, you know, and it's it's just horrible up there. So we're we're trying to correct that now.
When you talk about sidewalks, one of the big things that Valley Regional Transit actually brings to the table in larger cities is that you, if you engage in in that type of public transit, there are also grants available to help upgrade sidewalks and bus stops and things of that nature. So a lot of money comes in where it's like, okay, it costs us X amount to have this bus service. But we also get on top of the bus service, we get accessibility to these other funds here to help improve things like sidewalks. With Valley Regional Transit and transportation in general, what are your thoughts?
Well, you know, I was on that Valley Transit thing as a liaison person from the council to that, to that organization. And, you know, you can argue the ridership out of Caldwell, the Boise or some of the other areas, but it's pretty low. And for the amount of money that we put into it, is it justifiable? I guess it's everybody's opinion. They wanted to double, I think, the amount of revenue that that they wanted compared to two years ago, and we didn't go for that because of the ridership. You know, I I don't know where the answer there is, but it's definitely not throwing money down a rat hole just because they think that, you know, this is going to improve as far as the number of people riding the bus and everything. Is it necessary? Sure, there's a lot of people that that need that type of transportation to get to doctor's office and appointments that can't drive or whatever. But I think, again, I think Councilman Dittenberg is a liaison committee person from the city that represents the city for that council. And and I haven't heard too much from him lately, but you have to look at the numbers again. That's what I do, you know. And and ridership just didn't match the amount of money that they wanted. So we're still at around 350,000, I think. Not too much more than what we were the year before.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Yeah, that's a, transportation is a complex beast. Because, you know, obviously, the the main arteries that go into the chief economic hub, downtown Boise, it's like, what are you going to start expanding the freeways?
Yeah.
Start taking like the astronomical cost of adding a lane on both sides, the amount of property you would have to, I mean, it's, look, I don't know the answers. It just seems crazy to me.
Yeah, it is. And it it needs, just need a lot of good people in to look at the numbers and see, you know, what what we can do. But it's a necessary service. No, no argument there at all. You know, we need it.
Sure.
Just need to do a better job of of costing it out and what it really is from each of these areas, so.
Right, right. With all of this in consideration, with the growth and transportation and everything, you know, we would be remiss if we didn't talk about law enforcement, right? Essentially, these essential emergency services.
Yeah.
What do you think about the state of law enforcement in Caldwell?
It's improved drastically since I've been there during my first term. Most of the crime is down. There's two areas, I think, where crime was up yet. And there's not a lot you can do about it. Rape was one, and I think stolen vehicles was the other one. Those are the only two ones that were up. Well, how do you prevent rape? You know, what's the, I mean, that's, you can't, you know? Somebody decides to do it, they do it. They don't give you an advance warning that it's going to be done. And stolen vehicle, the same thing. When's somebody going to steal steal a vehicle? You don't know. But in all the other areas, the crime areas, we're we're really improved substantially since Chief Ingram's been there. Guy's got a lot of experience, you know, he came from the Ali area. I think he's on a gang unit at one time. And his unit took care of the Super Bowl when it was down there in Los Angeles, as far as security is concerned. He's hired a lot of people from different areas in in our western states that have a lot of experience in in gang related crime. And so I think we have a really, really good force going on for us. And and I look for it to even go down some more as far as crime is concerned. But those are the only two areas that have actually gone up rapes and and stolen vehicles. And how do you prevent that? Anybody's answer? I mean, just, you don't get any warning of it, period, so.
Do you think that there's, excuse me, sufficient amount of funding and resources being offered to the police department?
Not yet. I, you know, we're still behind in officers yet. And it's a ratio that the National Policeman's Association puts out. You know, whether it's good or bad, I don't know, but so many policemen first, so many thousand people.
One per thousand or something.
Yeah, yeah, I know, we're still behind yet and and we need to improve that. But again, you have to look at the money coming in versus the money coming out, and that's what you have to do with, so.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Chuck, we've talked about a lot of things, my goodness. We talked about roads, infrastructure, impact, growth, specific instances downtown, law enforcement. Are we missing anything?
You know, I think it's a pretty good coverage of everything, yeah. The Humane Society came up. You've probably heard about that, you know, the funding.
No, no, no.
Oh, is that right? Oh, well, we were at $68,000 a year roughly on Humane Society. They're having financial problems, obviously. It's run by the county. The county's responsible for it. And they came in and wanted 540,000 this last year, from 68 to 540.
That's that's a bit of a jump.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah. So we asked the questions, well, why? You know, well, this is the services that we provide and the cost of veterinarians and all the other stuff.
And sure.
And one of the first things I asked, so what about a balance sheet? Have we ever got a balance sheet from you folks as far as what the expenditures are versus revenues and all that? And we never have. And again, maybe a city manager would improve that. I would think it would.
Sure, sure.
And anyway, we're still going back and forth now. The county's responsible for it, but they're supposed to be, they're putting out a request for bid or proposal, RFP, I think they call it. And what they hope to get is somebody will come in and say, look, we'll run it for X amount of money. And then the cities can, the cities, meaning Napa, Caldwell and the other ones, can sit down and and tell them, yeah, we can afford this or we can't, or we need to do our own thing.
Right.
So that's where that lies right now. But it's a, it's a major heart touching deal right now because, you know, I'm an animal lover like everybody else is, and you know, how do you, how do you handle that? And the biggest, one of the biggest problems was they were afraid of that, you know, if an animal is kept more than five days, euthanasia was the next, was the next issue. And, you know, nobody likes to hear that. I don't either. And we just don't have enough people to adopt all the animals that go in there. So we need to revamp that whole thing.
Yeah, the, so many, I mean, this is, this is such a perfect example of the imperfect nature of decision makers, right? Because it's like, okay, look, yeah, like, we could sign the check, $500,000. First off, is everybody in Caldwell going to feel like that was $500,000 well spent?
Yeah.
Well, probably not, right? Does anybody like the alternative of, you know, lower levels of funding, but more euthanization? No, we don't like that either. And it's like, you just, you just get into a bind where it's like, man, what, there is no right answer.
Some of the arguments, Matt, was this, well, if you give them 540,000, what's important? Animals or my or my transportation to the doctor's office to save my life?
Right.
That's, see, those are the things that you get involved with.
And the EMS problem, the Chief Stowell obviously runs the Canyon County, you know, like ambulance service. And, you know, their funding problem is is paramount. They they ran, I believe, they passed a two year levy, right? So a temporary funding levy instead of a permanent levy override.
Yeah, again, that's a state issue, you know. Uh, yeah, we all have to participate, but the state needs to pick up the ball and get that thing going because it's it's their responsibility to do that. You know, they have to compete with the private industry right now. And they don't, they don't get the best value out of the runs that they make. In other words, the the best runs where you get the most money for your business, usually the private organizations, the private ambulance services get that. And they just get the chaff, you know, period. And that's another problem that we have. The the state needs to get together and solve that problem, so.
Man, it's a problem.
Yeah, it is. And and, you know, when you're sick and, and say you have a heart attack or something like that and you only have minutes to live, it's pretty damn important, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, man, I had, I've I've only had to call the ambulance once. I got um, got this thing called Menares Disease, where it's like I lost equilibrium in my ear, super random. Just like hanging around the house one day, getting ready to go to work. I'm like, I can't stand up. Next thing you know, I'm laid out on the floor. All of a sudden, people think I'm having like a stroke. I'm like, no, no, I'm okay. I just, I can't move, right? And, man, that ambulance, like, every single second ticking away, waiting for them to come.
Yeah, we we promoted, I don't Stowell really well, and we promoted to the state that they need to have that as a funding item in their budget, you know, for the coming years. It needs to be done because people's health is pretty important to us and and.
People's lives.
Yeah, and that service needs to be brought forward by the state legislature in a funding mechanism in their budget every year instead of trying to get subsidies from the cities like this, who works now. It's just not a good deal.
And there are some areas of Idaho that still have emergency services of that nature that are volunteer based.
Yeah, exactly. Well, even fire departments too, still have it, so, yeah.
How, like, we have iPhones. It's 2025. And you have areas where it's like, yeah, I volunteer on Saturday night and, you know, Jim, he volunteers on Monday night. We can't supply these types of services consistently to like professionals?
We need to, yeah. Again, it's a, most of it's a city and county issue, and, yeah, we need to do that, so.
Gotcha.
You get little towns like Notice, for instance, you know, tax base there isn't very good, you know, isn't very high because there're not a lot of people there. And you still need to supply services like that because if you expect a Caldwell unit to run all the way out to Notice, you know, it's just the time issue is important, you know, so.
Chuck, I appreciate you. We've talked about a lot of things. My goodness, what what an education on on some of this background. Nothing else you want to hit on?
Oh, I think that's, I think that's enough.
Well, thank you for coming in. Thank you for running again. You know, obviously, you've been, you've been at this for almost a decade. And you're throwing your hat and you could be doing anything with your time and your retirement. And you're committing yourself to trying to do the best for your community. And man, like, that's just really, really important to me. And again, I don't live in Caldwell, but thank you for what you're doing for me.
Sure. Well, my wife says, this better be the last time.
God.
We'll see.
We'll see. I don't know, baby. I I get the bug in me.
Family's important. I said the kids are all gone, but still, when I go back to, you know, my train under Mr. Hanson from Simplot Company that, you know, if there's problems out there, you think you can solve it, then you better put your head in and and try and do the best you can for the community. So that's what I'm trying to do.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you for coming in today.
You bet. My pleasure. You bet. My pleasure.